I'm the official clock. Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order and we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Stan, would you lead us all on the pledge, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Please bow your heads with me. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for bringing us all here together, and we pray that those that are not here, that you would be with all of them as well, be with us, give us wisdom, help us to make good decisions for our city, and we just thank you so much for all that you bless us with, and we pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated and thank you. Okay. City Attorney's Report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items are described in the agenda for closed session. In the case of both of them, there was report from council, direction was given, no final action was taken. In the case of city manager's contract, it was approved for to be distributed to the public for the open meeting, and it will be voted on in the open meeting.
And there are copies down here if anyone is interested. Okay, presentations. I would like to make a small one right now. Those flowers are out there are from the family of Charlotte Bratman. And I'm reading a letter from Bob Bratman, and it says, "Dear Mayor and Council Members, in 1977, the Richcrest City Council declared November 22nd as Charlotte Bratman Day in the city. It was meant to recognize my mother upon her departure from the Indian Wells Valley. During her many years of civic participation, she was tireless in helping others in the community where she lived since coming from New York with her husband and young children in 1960." Fifty. Fifty, thank you. The city council's thoughtful gesture of declaring a day in her honor was a very special tribute. It was one she and our family treasure as recognizing her civic participation. As a way of keeping her memory alive and honoring her contribution, we are delivering a farewell gift to Brighton City Hall as Charlotte Bratman brightened the lives of those around here. We extend our best wishes to the community of Richcrest and the Indian Wells Valley. Signed, Bob Bratman." So I wanna say thank you for all the work that Charlotte, along with Rose Varga, did, and it is our pleasure to accept those and display them. Okay, the next item is public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Is there anybody who would like to make an item a comment? Mr. Neal.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I'd like to address the fact that, I believe I talked about the poll that was recently taken, and that was about Parks and Recs, and I believe a lot of that was centered about the continuing question of whether the city's ever gonna be able to fix the pool, get it operational, so forth and so on. I hope that we can find a way to do that, I hope we can find a way to do that without having to tax our people any more total. I think I propose that we reduce the sewer tax $100, and maybe then I might support the Parks and Recs tax to the $250 a year, saving people 50 bucks a year. Well, it's not a lot, but it's the savings. Along those lines, I recall we've never gotten an actual concrete estimate on the cost to repair the pool. So in light of that, I'd like to offer a possible opportunity. I encountered a pool surface company in my neighborhood this last week, and I've emailed you all the information. I'm gonna hand this to the substitute city clerk here, and she could pass it on. And that's just the phone number and the name of the company doing that work. I talked with them briefly, you know, they do residential pools, but, you know, big pools just a matter of scale, so hopefully, maybe we can get somebody over there, and we can actually find out what it's really gonna cost to fix the pool, so then we can proceed down the road to actually doing something about the problem, potentially. Next thing I would like to do, and I'm gonna have to beg a little leeway from the chair here, this doesn't have to do directly with city business, but it does have to do with the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. And this, I'm gonna read you portions of the original Thanksgiving Day proclamation by our first president, President George Washington. It says, "Whereas it is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and favor, whereas both houses of Congress have by their joint committee requested me to recommend to the people of the United States a day of public Thanksgiving and prayer to be observed by acknowledging with grateful hearts the many signal favors of Almighty God, especially by affording them an opportunity peaceably to establish a form of government for their safety and their happiness. So I do recommend and assign this Thursday, and that year was 26th day of November, to be devoted by the people of these days to the service of that great and glorious being who is a beneficent author of all good, the good that was, that is, or that ever will be, that we may all unite in rendering unto Him our sincere and humble thanks for His kind care and protection of the people of this country, and that we may also then unite and most humbly offering our prayers and supplications to the great Lord and ruler of nations, and beseech Him to pardon our national and other transgressions, to enable us all, either in public or private, to perform our several duties properly and punctually to render our national government a blessing to all the people." That's not all, but I'm limited in time. And I would like to add to that portions of Psalm 136. "I'll give thanks to the Lord for He is good, for His mercy endures forever. I'll give thanks to the God of gods, for His mercy endures forever. I'll give thanks to the Lord of lords, for His mercy endures forever. To Him who alone does great wonders, for His mercy endures forever. To Him who by wisdom made the heavens, for His mercy endures forever. To Him who laid out the earth above the waters, for His mercy endures forever. To Him who made great lights, for His mercy endures forever. To the sun to rule by day, for His mercy endures forever, and the moon and stars to rule by night, for His mercy endures forever." So I would just like to beseech all that are watching and listening that they would take heed of these things and the psalm, and give thanks, because we are blessed, and you can look around you just right on the surface and figure that out real quickly. And we have a very good life in Richcrest. There's a lot going on in the rest of the world that we don't have to suffer, and we can complain about the streets, or this, that, and the other, which I speak up about from time to time, because that's the proper thing to do, you know, in its context, but we really ought to try to have grateful hearts and be grateful to the great God who gives us these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, the next item is council announcements. Lindsay, do you wanna go first?
Oh, sure. I just wanted to announce that we have the tree lighting coming up on December 1st, and before the tree lighting, at 4 o'clock, the Youth Advisory Committee is gonna have some family-friendly activities, crafts, some live music, and a bake sale going on, and then we will do the lighting ceremony at 5:30, and then following that, we will have an outdoor movie showing The Grinch. So please come out, bring your family and your friends, and kick off the Christmas season with us, so.
Thank you. Wallace? Eddie? Mike? None. Okay, the next item is going to be the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, these items will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Do any of the members of the council have any item they wish to be pulled? I will read them first. Item number one, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Richcrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority Regular Meeting dated November 1st, 2017. Item number two, proposed action to approve a contract for Ronald Stran as city manager. Item number three, proposed action to approve a resolution approving the retirement of Police Chief Ron Stran. And item number four, proposed action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the notice of completion on the Pearson Upjohn Parks Project, authorizing the city clerk to file the notice of completion, and authorize the release of retention in the amount of $512,155,004. $515,004, not $155,000, thank you. Thirty-five days after recordation of the notice of completion. Is there anybody on the council that would like to pull any of these items? Okay, is there anybody on the public who would like to pull any of these items?
Item number three.
Item number three. Okay, no others. Motion to approve then 1, 2, and 4?
I move.
Second.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mallor?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, number three, Dave, if you wanna ask your question?
Well, I didn't wanna ask a question. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank our former police chief, Ron Stran, for his service. I think he did a good job at the police department, and you're still around, so keep your ears open, you might hear something else. Thank you.
I'd like to second the motion with a round of applause.
Good job, former chief. Okay, so we have items 1, 2, and 3, and 4 dealt with?
Well, we need to-
We have to, wait a minute, we do have to approve. Thank you.
I move approval of 3.
Second.
Mr. Mallor?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, discussion and other action items. Discussion and provide direction to the city's representative on the board of the GSA. And there is two items I would like to tell you about. One I would like to discuss with you. The first item is a, the Prop 1 funding grant has been submitted, it was submitted yesterday The proposed cost is $3,748,600. The amount requested was $2,146,000. The difference is many of those were publicly funded and are part of the monies that have already been contributed and spent. That is, the item is already gone, it's on the, sent to the State Department of Water Resources, but I did wanna fill you in. The other item that's gonna, most of the other items are informational items, as is this one, but I'm going to share it with you. And, city manager, sir, I'm going to read these items because it's how we are going to operate in the future with the approval of the GSA board. There was some discussion on how, what role since the city will take the leadership position as chair and as general manager, how things are going to be done. Preparing the agenda, the city will lead with input from all members, the GSA and the TAC. Website maintenance. Rod, can you read that, please? Thank you.
Yeah, the website maintenance is gonna stay with the county. Regular meetings and conference calls, preparation, debrief of the agenda will be staff, as well as me and Ricka. Grant administration will stay with the county. The finance will stay with the county treasurer. The preparation of financial reports will stay with the county. It's just easier for the county at this point in time to manage and to continue to manage the funds. Analytical work related to board staff reports will be city-direct. Budget development will be the city. Developing and reviewing policies and procedure will be the city, as well as the legal team. Consult with legal team on policy items for the board, review and approval will be the city, as well as the legal team. Respond to citizens' complaints, respond to attorneys representing major pumpers, as well as processing record requests will go to the city. We take over the first meeting in January. The current manager, Alan Christensen, from Kern County, he'll be sticking around for a couple months, kinda getting us up to speed and helping us out on the debriefing calls and the agenda and what forth. So we're hoping for a fairly smooth transition. I know that Rick and I have to get caught up here pretty quick on what's going on, so we're gonna do our best and see where it goes.
Thank you, Rod. I'm sorry it was so small, I couldn't read it, so I appreciate it. Is there any comments from the council or the public on that? There has been no approval of this, but it's been a general consensus.
I just had a question, 'cause last time I got the agenda packet, I got the full packet, and this time I only got the two pages with the agenda items, and I was curious because on the consent agenda, it says approve expenditures in the amount of $58,000, and I was just curious what-
That is from Stetson.
Okay.
Engineering for the preparation of the Prop 1 funding.
Okay. Is there a breakdown of that somewhere?
I do not have it.
Okay.
I do not have it.
How much was the one that we approved last month for them?
There, I don't believe there were any approved last month.
'Cause last month, there was a bill, 'cause I asked about the bill that was attached last month.
That was the bill from Stetson, the 58.
That was for August, though.
Yeah, I don't have any others. I am going to ask that we get a little bit more detailed information on the funding, because I don't know where we are on the funding. And with that, with leaving all that in the county, I don't want them to do it just as they've done it in the past. I would like a more detailed cost of what they were. And that isn't a criticism, it's just that they had all the money there, and they were preparing it. I wanna see more detail. And that will come from, input from all of the GSA to the county. Okay, is there any other questions? Rod, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, ma'am. I have a copy of the draft agenda with the attachments, all forward to. Ms. Stevens?
I will make sure I did, 'cause I thought I forwarded you the one with everything on it. My apologies.
Yeah, well, normally, when I get, I get it from Ms. Duffy, too, but this time I didn't get the full packet for some reason.
Okay, all right. Sir?
Ronald Porter. Well, it's just a question that I, do they have any idea how long it's gonna be before the approval of the grant, how long that process takes? Do they, any ideas whatsoever?
They're expecting it as soon as possible. The deadline was just last Thursday or Friday, wait a minute, Tuesday, last Tuesday, and so they're, they were expecting to do it, what we were told, within 60 to 90 days, they would have the information available and the decision we made by the State Department of Water Resources, how much the grant is coming.
Okay.
I don't believe we're gonna get an answer that quickly, but we're hoping.
Well, that's all you can ask. The other question was, I realize the city's doing a lot of this function, it probably needs to be set down exactly what the, the city's gonna be paid for doing this work for the GSA. I realize it's a proposal, and I, this is just a suggestion, I'm not trying to put anybody on a seat or anything, just, it'd be a good idea to put forth.
Without being able to answer that fully, I will tell you the direction it was. Last year, I believe Kern County, I better not quote something, 'cause it was $400,000, but it had a lot of other monies in there that they paid. It isn't gonna be nearly that cost this year, because a lot of the work was already done, but Kern County paid that, and that was not from our monies, there still is money left in the fund, that we each contributed $25,000 for. So the way it was set is, the lead agency will bear the burden of those costs, and so next year, it will be the Water District who will do all that and bear the burden of the costs. We don't know what they are yet, because we don't have it finalized, but that's why I'm asking for a total of where we are and what we, what the cost is gonna be that we can at least look at.
Yeah, well, I understand the GSA's gonna cover the costs, but the city might wanna document, this is what it's, because the, the city's going to accept for taking on these responsibilities coming from that fund, it might be better to document with clarity, is all I'm saying.
I agree.
I'm not, I'm not saying that anybody's doing anything wrong, I'm just saying it might be something to consider.
I don't disagree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
'Cause I look back, and last month, the invoice was dated October 9th for $20,000, and then the invoice that he was showing me is dated October 16th for $58,000. So let's, you know.
But we aren't gonna have a Prop 1, Prop 1 preparation in the future. That doesn't mean there may be monies that are gonna be significant, but we won't have that Prop 1 funding. Rod, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I know during our staff call last month, they had mentioned that we needed to make sure that we managed Stetson, that all of the requests for research or answers would have to go through the manager for approval to try and keep the costs down, because they are very expensive. And that's, that's one of the jobs that the manager has to do.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's one of the jobs that I'm gonna have to do, is just make sure we manage Stetson's time and use it wisely.
On the agenda, there was a number of questions that were issued by the PAC, and they have, the, Ellen has prepared the answers for those, and some of them, they, they wanted to go over them, 'cause they haven't had a chance to go over them, and they will prepare those answers. And some of them is monies that were, that were charged back to the GSA by the PAC, I think in particular the PAC, but we're going to have to have a better way of controlling those dollars, and simply say, because you wanna do it, therefore you can go spend the money. And that isn't going to be the way it is. And there has to be some tighter restraints on Stetson's money, or it's gonna be all gone, and we are not gonna be able to accomplish. And I would like to see a budget developed, what happens if we don't get this grant money? We've been pretty much assured we are, because there's more money that's, at the time, there was more money available than was asked for initially. I don't know if that's still the case now with all these reports that came in. So we just have to get the information. Is there any other discussion? Dave?
Yes, thinking, Madam Mayor. Sort of glaringly to me, I noticed that the water agency is not responsible for anything, but then I heard you just say that next year, they're gonna, they're gonna be responsible.
There's a difference between the Kern County Water Agency and the Indian Wells Valley Water District. Which one are you talking about, sir?
Well, neither, either one. I didn't hear a mention-
The Kern County Water Agency is not involved, except for their involvement with Michelle Anderson, funding some of the work that's done over here for measuring wells and various other assigned tasks.
And the Indian Wells Valley Water District?
The Indian Wells Valley Water District is, has contributed the same amount that we all did initially, and now what will be done is the Water District is doing many studies through the PAC and the TAC that are being funded by private entities, as well as governmental entities, and bringing that information back, like the SkyTem project, trying to map the boundaries of the basin and determine how much water is in there, as well as all the work that's being done, being funded by COSO Geothermal, the Water District, Rich, I'm sorry, I don't have all those people. Who am I missing?
Okay, well, is this gonna be a permanent thing, then, throughout the life? Are they gonna rotate the responsibilities, or is-
Yes.
Okay.
The responsibility of the first year was Kern County, it was Kern County.
Okay.
The second year is us, the third year is the Water District.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did you wanna say something, Lindsay?
I just said, bless you.
Oh, bless you. I echoed you. Mr. Neal?
Just as an informational point, talking about the charges by the consultant, the latest estimate for the first six months, I believe, was close to $250,000 of cost on their part. So like I said, I think they're gonna end up being in the order of, for the next two years, probably about a million bucks, actually, when it gets down to it. Now that it's gonna shift, this is part of it, but I'm afraid that we're gonna find that there will probably be considerable amount of city staff time that has to be devoted to the activities of the groundwater agency, Mr. new city manager. Sure you're aware of that. Our, and our previous general manager, the CAO of the county, did, I thought, an excellent job with that, and part of that job, of course, is fielding questions for people, and getting those answers and so forth, and if you haven't been to the meetings, you'll find that there are a lot more people at those meetings, even though they're 10 in the morning on Thursday, a lot of very knowledgeable people, people who are watching every little thing that goes on, so you're gonna probably find a good bit of your time maybe taken up, fielding questions, getting answers for the people, because they're, we're in the heat now of developing the actual plan, which is going to be the governance of the water use in the basin here. So one thing that I have spoken up on several occasions to the PAC, and I would encourage members of the council to encourage our representative to be amenable to, is that there is a better, more easily accessible website for the groundwater agency proper. What they have now is you gotta go to the county, and you gotta figure out where on the county website to drill down to, to go to get the information, and as this is now formally, its own agency, it's not part of the county, it is its own agency, it really should have its own website, and all information pertinent to that agency's information and activities and everything should be on that website. And informational stuff, as I informed the PAC, and some of you are probably aware, Facebook is well-used for putting out notice and information. It's not anywhere near as well-used for providing information as a website is, but you can cheaply buy ads that just blast out to everybody that's on Facebook in a given area, so providing notice via that method is probably the cheapest way that can be done, and so I've, you know, requested the PAC recommend to the board, at least twice now, that they seriously look at doing that, and I hope that Madam Mayor will encourage that. That, I think, will be very necessary for the people in the valley that, you know, would need to find out and don't quite already know what's going on about the things that are coming their way with this groundwater agency. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Okay, any other council comment? Okay, the next item is proposed action to approve a resolution to approve a professional services contract with the engineering firm of Willden Engineering to perform supplementary building plan check and inspection services at the cost of 75% of the plan check fee, and at the billing rate of $95 per hour for inspections, and authorize the city manager, Ron Stran, to execute the contract upon the city attorney's office approval of the contract. Mr. Culp?
Yes.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, council members, this item is brought to you tonight as a request from our building community. We've had local builders make a request for supplemental plan check and inspection services, supplemental to the county services currently. What we're providing for you tonight is a contract with Willdan to perform those services. Their rates are at 75% of the plan check, which is based upon the valuation of the structure, and $95 an hour for their inspection services. The program will be set up whereby the inspection services will be, the deposit will be required to be posted with the city. The deposit amount is $4,200. And from that $4,200, we'll be paying Willdan directly for their inspection services. At the end of the project, any funds remaining in their balance will be refunded to them, minus 15% for administrative and handling costs for administering the program. If the deposit should become at a level that we feel it's necessary that it be added to for additional inspection services, we'll ask the developer for an additional amount, determined by myself and the city manager, to, to ensure that we have sufficient funds to pay our consultant. Again, at the end of the project, with that additional amount, if there's amounts left over, we will refund that remaining amount, and we will deduct 15% again for handling and administration of that program. We are going to, we're currently trying to develop a program, or a module, or reprogram our new world accounting system to allow us to collect the deposit and to be able to pay out of that deposit. And we're working with the firm that is maintaining or developing our software to put that, put that portion together. There's no fiscal impact to the city. All the developer will be paying for the plan check fees. Staff's costs will be covered, and we'll, everything will be paid for. The small fiscal expense of the programmer to develop the module, so to speak, for being able to collect deposits and pay from that. That concludes my report.
Any questions from council? Any questions from the, oh, I'm sorry, Mike, were you going to?
I was just going to make a comment. We had a meeting with most of the builders in town. It was very well-attended, and the Willdan was there to present their program. This offer, this is not an exclusive. This offers a, an opportunity for a builder or a developer to have a other way of doing things, rather than going through the county program. It possibly will cost more. If a lot of builders get on, it might cost less. If, if they, if they can't provide something up here locally, it's going to cost $500 to get someone to come up every day to do inspections. So, we're hoping that if enough get on there. And right now, that developer, what's the name of that developer?
Hudson.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're using him right now. So.
If I may add, it, it seems to be well-received at this point. We have had a couple of special projects. We've asked Willdan to jump into the Rose Garden project, as well as Mr. Ruland had a project, a remodel. And Willdan has been able to jump in and do inspections, and, and continue, or allow the builder to continue in progress in their, in their projects. I might also mention that we do have copies of the contract here available for the public tonight, if so, if you have a desire to review that.
I had a question. There was some discussion at the last meeting whether Willdan would be able to take over some of the work that was previously done on a particular project. And they have been successful in doing that, is that correct?
Yes. We, we had been approached by a couple of the developers, the developer of the Rose Garden project, as well as Mr. Ruland's project, a remodel. And we asked Willdan if they'd be willing to step in to a project which the county has already started on the inspections. And they first wanted to take a look at the projects and know what they are getting into, and see, determine the scope of what their services might be, and if there are any problems. They did meet with the individual builders. They did tour the individual builders' project sites, and determined that they could indeed step in and take those projects over for the inspection services. So, and they have, we have developed a, or we asked Willdan, since we didn't have our program in place where we could accept deposits, we asked Willdan if they would do something special for us. And that would be to have a third-party contract directly with the builder, whereby the builder would pay Willdan directly for their services. And Willdan agreed to do so. They were able to develop a third-party agreement specifically, and especially for this case. They, they are a municipal services organization, and they like dealing or contracting directly with the public agency, rather than dealing with a private developer. As you can see, they want to take any conflicts out of their services that they offer. So, anyway, they were willing to do so. And, and so, they are able to proceed now with their projects.
Should there be any disagreements between Willdan and the developer or the builder? Are we expected to be the mediator, or how are, how is the city involved in that?
Well, we do have some authority. The building official carries that authority. However, we're, we cannot waive building code requirements. We can look at alternatives, is what I'm told. I've been counseled by the building official for the county on what the city, city's capacity, or the building official's capacity, as an acting building official, what capacity I would have. I would not have the ability to waive a code requirement. That's, that cannot be done. However, we can look at alternatives. And if the alternative offers a solution to whatever that code provision might be, that's being contested, well, we are offered that opportunity to offer an alternative.
Thank you. That answers my question. Is there any other council questions? Okay, public comment. Mr. Porter?
Thank you. Ronald Porter. First off, I, I think this is probably a, a very good idea, because it holds the county inspectors to, to a good standard as well. My first question is, is this particular option going to be open to other engineering firms, if they chose to, to come into Richcrest?
Yes, we would always welcome other candidates, other municipal service consultants to provide that service. This was as a matter of urgency. We had several builders that had come to us requesting this service. So, out of necessity, we've selected Willdan. I might mention, they helped us out quite a bit with the Harbor Freight project. Harbor Freight had a, an escape clause in their contract, and they were not able to get their plans processed in the time that would meet their timeframe for getting their project underway. And so, they were about to exercise their escape from the project and, and abandon the project. We realized what their necessity, timeframe necessity was, and we went to search for consultant services. Willdan was able to provide them the services within the timeframe that they needed to be able to meet their, their schedule. And thus, we were successful in keeping Harbor Freight in town. So, and, and as a result of that, there's been other instances where another contractor's come to us. So, it's been something that has gone along for a couple of months now. And now, with this urgency or matter of necessity, we've decided that we would expand that service beyond. Certainly, the, we would welcome any other agents, or any other consultants to offer their services as well, supplementing our Building and Safety Division.
If I may, Madam, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I'll just add that the contract does not obligate the city to stay with Willdan. It's a, it's, it's based on a work order basis, so one, one request at a time.
Thank you, sir.
One other question, it's probably a simple one to answer, is, is there a state requirement that the inspectors meet certain qualifications?
Yes. The, they are required to carry the credentials. They are required to carry certifications and be updated, and be, go through continuous training. There's requirements for, I think the, the code even requires. I think there's legislature regarding building inspection and building officials that requires mandatory training. And I forget what the interval is, but there is mandatory training required.
Each one's different, but, yeah. I just lost my question. Give me a second here. Does, is it, is there any problem with the county, is, is for us doing this, because they're, as far as their approval of these contractors?
No, actually, they were quite receptive. They, we, we discussed that with them, first of all. That's what we wanted to find out, is there any difficulty with having supplementary services for the city. And their position is, we are a contractor to the city, much the same as your consultant would be a contractor to the city. Their only stipulation was that if a developer, builder, contractor wanted to go with the Willdan's services, that they must stay with Willdan. The county was not willing to step into a project that started by the consultant. So, that was their only stipulation. But they were okay with us to provide supplemental services for our Building and Safety Division.
And one more thing, and you don't have to answer this one. They may want to consider, just, just in case in the future, is what happens if one of the consultants disappears? How they would handle that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
This doesn't deal exactly with that contract, but, but I had a, a solar contractor ask me the other day, and since it sort of deals with this, but, you know, they're having problems with getting their systems and the Kern County inspectors, quite a number of them, and almost instructionistically. And, is that a good word? Anyway, he, he asked if there, if there was an arrangement whereby, because Lindsey and I had talked to, you know, instruction, at the conference, and we had talked to those folks, and they were doing that. They were using private, right, third-party.
Another city was using.
Another city was using, you know, so in other words, if you get bogged down with the county, and you've got somebody for politics, or whatever, a systematic bureaucracy, you can't get action, do we have an avenue for the solar contractors in town, if they wanted to take this same approach? And could Willdan do that for them too, if necessary?
Well, sir, I have not discussed specifically any solar contractors' work, or their ability to plan check or inspect solar.
I'm hitting you there out of the blue, but if you could check that, because that was.
And I'd certainly be glad to check for you.
Okay, that would be great.
But we, we've just looked at them for residential and commercial. And we can certainly ask that question, and if they do have the.
Well, this would be residential. Yeah, this mainly residential, you know, because that's what they do, bring these things on people's roofs. And I don't know if it's the same inspector, it's probably another inspector.
It's the same inspector. The county inspector inspects solar also. They also have the authority to approve them over the counter, so they don't have to go to Bakersfield for plan checks. So, solar actually is, is, is a lot more streamlined than a regular home, for example.
Right.
So, but I, I haven't heard any complaints from the solar, apparently you have, but most of the complaints that we were getting were from general contractors.
I've had a solar person complain to me as well, about things moving slowly for him.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, sir.
Yes, I have a question on the, once, once you go through the plan checks and the inspections and everything, that all gets recorded in the county, I think, somewhere. And is there a difference? Is there, is there a means of differentiating as to which contractor does, does the inspections and so on?
Well, there will be with our particular program. We will know who the, if the contractor elects to go with the county, we will have a record of who the county inspector will be performing that service. And if the contractor, builder, developer decides to go with Willdan, we will have a record of who that particular inspector will be.
Okay.
Our records, however, for our Willdan program, will be within the city, and that will not be a record, that will be kept by the county. That'll be completely independent. So, tho, those records will be with the city, and, and not with the county.
But just a clarification too, Dave. The only thing that gets recorded to county is, like when I, if I sold you a home, I filed a notice of completion, that gets recorded. But the city actually issues the certificate of occupancy. So, whether it's, whether it's the county billing inspector that signs off it, or Willdan that signs off it, Lauren Culp is the one that's going to sign the certificate of occupancy.
Okay. But what about if, if I sell a property, and there's a problem that needs to be addressed, am I going to be able to research that, or, I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, when property transfers?
Well, if you, if you added addition without a billing permit, you'd be required.
No, no, I'm, I'm not, not, not going there.
I'm not sure what else, what else you'd be having a problem with.
Dave, we do keep an, an address file. And in that address file, we would be able to go to that file, and determine if it was a project that was inspected by our consultant or by the county, in which we could direct you then to that particular inspection agency to search out any questions or concerns that you might have with your, with your building.
Okay. Yeah, I was just concerned about that a little bit, because it's sometimes hard to trace back after a few years, you know, as to what actually transpired, and by, by whom. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Raja Ratnam?
Good evening, council. Solomon Rajaratnam, 605 Suzanne Street. I work for Mission Bank. I'm the branch manager and commercial lender. We do a lot of commercial construction loans. At present, we have three construction loans going on, and none of them were completed within the timeframe we gave. So, we are having the problem where the borrower is not able to comply with the covenants because of, not because of any of their fault, because the Kern County inspector is not coming, or he's delaying things. So, we have three more commercial constructions going on in the pipeline. So, it's very important we have an inspector who is active, and who is active in our community, so that these developmental projects are completed on time. And so, we generally give 12 months' time for construction, and the borrower says, we'll be completing in six months itself. And here we are, after 12 months, they are not able to complete the construction. And they are violating the covenant, and we are going, we are penalizing them for no fault of them. So, this is a very good alternative for the contractors locally. So, I would encourage the city council to go ahead and approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to state, I've observed at infrastructure committee meetings, the discussion on this, and, and noted the, what sounded like the very, very sad lack of responsiveness and, and just not in any consistency whatsoever on the part of the county inspectors, causing lots of problems for getting these billing inspections done at all, in any kind of timely fashion. Or, you know, things change from time to time, which is basically unacceptable. So, I'm afraid it sounded like the county people, even though they're stating they're working for us on contracts and so forth, fail to realize their obligation to, to the citizens of this part of the county. So, I congratulate the council members that initiated this, and, and the staff work on finding an alternative to, a solution to a problem, basically. And I would encourage And I would encourage that we try to ensure that the same, a similar kind of a problem does not occur, that Willdan uses the same people, or at least adheres to exactly the same kinds of standardization on their inspections when they do those, so that once, you know, they get, builders get subsequent inspections, they don't, you know, get one and then they get another one. They find out, oh, somebody throws something else up on the plate telling them that they have to do, because that apparently was probably the biggest part of the problem, from what I remember. So, you know, we're getting our cut for administration of the contracts. So we'll oversee these guys and, you know, make sure that they provide good service to the builders so that the problems they're trying to eliminate do go away.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other council comment?
The only comment I would have, in all the years I've done multiple, you know, real estate projects and building projects and solar things and so forth, I've dealt with a lot of different inspectors. And I think a general takeaway here is that, you know, it all comes down, it's like, people say, well, how good is your school? It's not how good the school is, it's how good are the teachers. It's not the school. In this case, you know, the county, it's not how good is the county or the system or the building department, it's how good and responsible are the inspectors. And so I think the responsibility here, whether or not the takeaway here is whether it be on Willdan or whether it be on the county, that you have and you hire people that have a good attitude, understanding that we are besieged by overregulation. And when you have that, you have to have really good guys and good gals that are fair, have good judgment, that work well with people, and that work as well as they can within the boundaries of the law. Some inspectors I know for a fact have gotten a horrid reputation because they deserve it, because they're obstinate, their ego gets in the way, they use their authority inappropriately, and they've been in there for years. And I'm not saying just with the county, but I've seen it happen. Then you'll have another person, they say, get that person, because they're fair, they're equitable, they're responsive, and they're doing a good job. So I think the takeaway is, whether we're using Willdan or we're using the county, that whoever, it's a responsibility on both parties to get the right inspector with the right skill set and the right attitude in order to do a good job. So that's my comment.
I... Lindsey?
I was just going to say, I motion approval of item six as requested.
Yeah, I second.
Thank you.
I would like to say something here at this point before we have approval, if I may. I want to thank all the builders who, for months and months and months, have been contacting various council members, asking for help. I want to thank our staff for recognizing there were issues and willing to deal with them and find solutions. And I think it's a glorious time to say, we can grow together because we support and understand each other. So the people that are trying to build understand that there is no barriers. All there is is lines of communication we need to keep open. So continue to speak up and seek solutions. And I think, I know Mike and I have had numerous meetings with them, and so I want to thank everybody for coming forward and finding solutions.
At the risk of getting in trouble with my colleague next week, I just want to add, Lauren Culp has spent hours and hours developing this and listening to the complaints of contractors. I think he's been a saint through this for the last two months.
Thank you, sir.
Good, I second the motion with a round of applause from Mr. Culp. Thank you.
All right, so we had a motion and a second? Okay.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing on ordinance, the second reading and adoption ordinance 17-3, amending Article 24 of Chapter 4 of the Ridgecrest Municipal Code to prohibit or restrict medical and non-medical cannabis and commercial cannabis activities. We are going to enter a motion to waive the reading, but sir, if you wanted to address things before we do that...
It's not a public hearing, is it?
It isn't a, oh, it is a public hearing, thank you. I open a public hearing. Thank you. Sir.
As stated in the first reading, the proposed ordinance as brought before you is to bring the city up to and current with the new current state law, which was passed on November, in November of 2016 by Prop 64, which legalized many cannabis activities. The new ordinance that we are proposing amends Article 24, Chapter 4 of the Ridgecrest Municipal Code. In the ordinance, it prohibits all commercial cannabis activities, including cultivation and sales. However, does permit medical facilities with long-term care and fit the description under Health and Safety Code 1250 to dispense medical cannabis. It also does not restrict those individuals that want to partake in cannabis activities from growing their own inside their residence and utilizing it for both medical and recreational. It does prohibit the outdoor cultivation, as well as the law itself prohibits recreational use outdoors. However, medical, we cannot prohibit them from utilizing it except under four circumstances. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, is there any discussion from council?
So somebody complained to me the other day, they came out of Walmart, and there was a family smoking, they make it smell it all over, you know, when they walked out. So what you just said is, that is prohibited, correct?
Correct, unless they are a medical marijuana user and have a card.
They have a card, though they have a right to smoke medical marijuana anywhere in public?
That's correct, sir. Anywhere that you could smoke cigarettes, the medical users could utilize marijuana. However, they could not use it in a vehicle, operating a boat, or in about any school.
Okay. If I may, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, there are even medicinal use of medical cannabis, there are, as the chief said, there's places where it's prohibited. One of them is places where tobacco is prohibited. So if it's a public park or something like that, now you mentioned Walmart, so I imagine people can smoke tobacco outside of Walmart.
Well, you have to be so many feet away from the entrance.
Correct.
Yeah, the problem is, they were way, way away, and you can smell it clear as a bell, but that's for discussion for another day. Now we have to get into a radius of distance, and it's hopeless. So we're just going to be stinking, that's all. The town is going to be stinking. So get ready for some stinking, everybody.
Okay, is there any other council comment? Okay, any public comment on the public hearing?
First off, I'm in support of the ordinance, and I'm, Ronald Porter, I'm sorry. I'm in support of the ordinance, and I don't agree with recreational use of marijuana. But I do have one problem with the ordinance, and I think it has to do with due process, is because we're becoming, getting into a practice of this across the country, and that is, each and every day shall be considered a violation. That becomes a problem, because if they came out, not that I'm going to grow it, but if I did, and said, well, you've been growing that marijuana plant in your yard for six months. Well, under the law, that makes me guilty or a year, by less easier here, it's easier, guilty of a year. So that's 365 misdemeanor violations. So in theory, if it was charged that way, which, I'm saying this because never trust your government. I don't think any one of you people up there would want to do it, nor do the chief. It's just, the point is, is you have to look at it in that fashion, because anything that can abused, there can become a time that it will be abused. And in theory, under that law, even as a six-month sentence, they could get 150-plus years in jail for each violation. That's just theory, but it's true.
No, sir, it would just be, it's just a violation of the municipal code.
Which is a misdemeanor.
It was a misdemeanor, but it would be a fine.
It has a sentence time as well, as a jail time under the code. But I'm just making, I'm not picking on this here, but it's something we have to very seriously consider, because if it is charged that way, it denies due process, because it puts a person in such dire consequences that they're going to have to comply, even if they want to challenge the citation in court. And that's just something you want to think about, is the citizen is a sovereign in this nation, and they shouldn't have their rights put in jeopardy in any way by the law itself. That's just something you need to consider when you say every day constitutes a violation. Because you could actually cite someone, I mean, misdemeanors have a one-year timeframe on citations, but in theory, you could cite them 365 times.
Mr. Porter, I would like to point out, we have a hard time keeping hardened criminals in jail.
I know. And I wasn't saying this to pick on anybody especially at all, but it's just something you need to think about when you write these laws, because a citizen, even though you have no problem with your council members up there today, you always have to consider who might sit there next. And that's something that you need to consider when you write these statutes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Dave Matthews, I just recall that when we first started having this discussion, oh, actually, it was before, come to think of it, I was suggesting that the city needs to regulate. But one of the scenarios that I had was whether or not the use of the substance is actually prohibited on city premises while employees are on duty. And I'm just wondering if that's been overlooked, or is there still something that covers that?
Are you specifically talking about employees?
Well, yes.
Employees are prohibited.
I'm sorry?
Employees are prohibited, especially the police department, they're prohibited.
Yeah, I would hope so.
So, yeah.
But is that, is that just rules, or is it in this ordinance, or where?
No, we have, those are separate rules and policies that we have to follow.
Okay.
Personnel rules, and then within the PD, it would be, it was covered under our policy and procedures.
Does that apply to all employees and everything?
Yes. Our personnel rules apply to all employees.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Yes.
Jaime Sandwell, 1401 Iowa. Nothing I can say can change everybody's mind here, I know that, you might as well eat up. The council, one time last session we had, they invited you to go down to the shop, the one we have out in the county line, and to sit and see what kind of patients come in there. There's a lot of cancer patients over the age of 50, and I'm one of them.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone?
It's not just not the flowers that you want, but it's a lot of edibles, it's a lot of CBDs. And as a casual patient, Mission Mayor, didn't they ever give you the option, didn't they tell you the option for CBDs? Now it's happening. We have a lot of patients coming in who are 80 years old, 70 years old, that need the CBDs. And you just doing this is going to send them, the county is going to do it, it's just sending people way out of their distance to get this medication that is going to help here, a lot of people in the city. Have you guys ever thought about the casino coming in? And they do have a 50,000-foot tow out in Death Valley. They sell it in Nevada. I guarantee you, the county bans it, you guys ban it, they're going to have it. They're going to have it, I guarantee it. Why wouldn't they? They have to have a distribution place to get rid of their product. And whatever they tell you, federal land, they can do what they want. No tax. People will be flocking in there. No money for you guys, no money for the county. It's just sad. I guarantee in 10 years' time, eight years, the city council will be here. The liberals will probably be a little more involved in the city, and we'll see what happens then. Because people will remember how you guys voted tonight, and I will spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Okay, we're going to, the motion, someone will read the first motion, and then we'll require a second, and then the second motion. Anyone want to go ahead and do that? All right, I'll go ahead and read it.
I think he was going to, Mr. Mauer.
Pardon me?
You want to read it, Mike?
Want me to read the whole paragraph?
Yes.
Make a motion to waive reading it in full and to adopt by title only, ordinance 17-03, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Ridgecrest, amending Article 24 of Chapter 4 of the Ridgecrest Municipal Code to prohibit and restrict medical and non-medical cannabis and commercial cannabis activities.
Second.
Okay, and then are we voting this separately?
Yeah, we have to vote on that.
I knew that, that's what I wanted to ask, the second one. We will have a vote on the first one.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion passes.
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt by title only, ordinance 17-03, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Ridgecrest, amending Article 24 of Chapter 4 of the Ridgecrest Municipal Code to prohibit and restrict medical and non-medical cannabis and commercial cannabis activities.
Second.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, sir. The next item is committee reports. City York, Mr. Mauer, will you report on that, please?
Yes, ma'am. We had a meeting last night. We had four items on the agenda. The first item was three-day parking. We got a full disclosure on that. The state of California does the 72-hour parking. We voted to allow seven days, or 10 days for abandoned vehicles. The chief of police and the city manager are in favor of keeping it the way we've already approved it, and so that was done. We went through, we discussed excess property. Staff is studying the issue. We got a full list of all the properties we have in town and out of town. And so the staff is going to come back with a recommendation on which ones we want to excess off. We discussed the charge for the use of City Hall. Some people have asked why we are letting, for example, CR Sands use City Hall for their meetings free. There's a reciprocation there. They let our people use meeting rooms and things like that over at the schools for free. And so we don't have a lot of people using City Hall. Most people use the Kerr McGee Center. So we just discussed that. The fourth item was, I request on the agenda to discuss the municipal code as it applies to serving in the city council. Apparently, I think there's some vagueness there, and we're looking at rewriting that. In fact, one of the citizens that attended the meeting actually wrote a paragraph up for us to consider. And so we're going to consider working that up, and we'll be at our next meeting. And that was our...
Okay, finance committee?
We meet Monday.
Okay.
You going to be a town?
Me? Yeah.
Okay, infrastructure, I understand that's been canceled.
Yeah, that falls on Thanksgiving, and nobody would want to come to Thanksgiving.
I can't imagine why.
Are we going to have one the following Thursday? Do we need to? Because otherwise, we probably won't have one on Christmas either.
You don't want to have one on Christmas either? You're narrow-minded. I don't know, did we make a decision on when we're going to have that meeting?
At the last meeting, there was no discussion about a special meeting, but I'm more than willing to reach out to the committee members and try to set a date for a special meeting in December.
Or it would be November 30th is an option, too.
I still need, we'd need to make sure that the room's available and I'm not in any conflict with anything else.
I just don't know, because we've talked about that we have a lot on our agenda, so if we skip... if we skip two months, is that going to cause us a problem?
Okay. Well, maybe we better get together and talk about it in private and get something lined up so we can publish it in plenty of time for the meeting.
Okay. Parks, Rec, and Quality of Life?
Yes. We met, we got an update on the status of the projects, like the Kerr McGee ball fields. And then we also talked about the upcoming activities for the tree lighting, so.
Just want to make a comment. I drive up and down Downs several times a week and it appears to me, you know, if you build it, they will come. Pearson Park looks like it's getting a lot more activity now.
Yeah. I was there Saturday with friends and there was three or four birthday parties going on at the same time there. And somebody commented, wow, the park's crowded. And I said, I think this is what parks are supposed to look like on a Saturday afternoon, so.
It was pretty busy on Friday, too.
Yeah.
Just a comment.
Okay. Youth Advisory?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Lindsay reported on what they talked about today as far as the activity is going to go on with the lighting of the tree, tree lighting ceremony.
Okay. September, March for the Action Committee and so we haven't met. RACBB?
We don't meet until the first of next month, first Wednesday of the month.
Okay. EDC?
Oh, we did not meet.
And Travel City Committee?
So we had our first meeting on a couple weeks ago, I think it was. And we established that we will be meeting the first Thursday of the month at, did we say 4:00 PM? Because I thought we said 5:00. We'll have to double-check that. But we'll be meeting the first Thursday of the month. At our first meeting, we discussed some amendments that we would like to see on the MSA to add some protections for water, marijuana, land use, and buying of other land. The tribe requested that we look at putting those into an intergovernmental agreement rather than the MSA. So we're still discussing that and I think that pretty much covers the whole meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you. Other committees, boards, or commissions? Anybody?
Kern cog is tomorrow night.
Anybody else have any others?
We met on, Madam Mayor, we met on the air pollution, but it was nothing significant that we talked about, so.
Are you going to be able to set up the videos that will come then from each individual agency? So, not videos, conferencing? So that's where, I know when I served there, that's what they were working on and so it's coming along?
Madam Mayor, yes, we have been, we've had two meetings, be it satellite or, I guess the term now is streaming or whatever the term is from an electronic standpoint. I T., you can help me on that one. But we set it up in our conference room upstairs and me and Mike, oh, I'm thinking of you, me and Mick, we've attended those meetings twice. It's worked out really, really well.
Video conferencing.
Good. Thank you. That's the term, video conferencing. Thank you. Okay. Any other committees, boards, or commission reports? Okay. City managers report.
Nothing to report this time.
Future agenda items? Okay. Mayor and council comments? I'm going to ask your indulgences here before anybody reports what I said the county has spent on the GSA. Let me verify that figure because I was going from the top of my head and I don't have it. So before you report it, please let me verify it. So if you'll call me tomorrow, 382-3563, or you want to come to the GSA meeting, you can hear that. But I just don't want something that's erroneous to be reported. Okay? Any other council comments?
Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week.
Good job. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.
On both of them. What's your? I could have.